Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the City Council meeting to order from Monday, June 28, 2021. We have one public hearing this evening. If the clerk can please read.
Public hearing number one regarding accepting ownership of Barrett Village Lane.
We have 20 items for original consideration. If the clerk can please read item number one.
Item number one for final consideration and ordinance amending Chapter 183-6 and 183-8 of the city code.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number two, if the clerk can please read.
Item number two for original consideration, a resolution calling for a public hearing to amend Chapter 28-2 of this code of the city of Schenectady relating to the place and time of regular meeting.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number three, if the clerk can please read.
Item number three for original consideration, a resolution authorizing an agreement with University at Albany Center for Technology and Government.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number four, if the clerk can please read.
Item number four for original consideration, a resolution authorizing an intermunicipal sewer agreement with the town of Rotterdam for sewage treatment.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number five, the clerk can please read.
Item number five for original consideration, resolution to amend the fire department wage and salary line in the 2021 budget.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number six, if the clerk can please read.
Item number six for original consideration, a resolution in part of the New York State Senate Bill A 00146 and Assembly Bill A 00479 relating to including the promotion and extension of cricket in the state of New York to the jurisdiction of the state athletic commission.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number seven, if the clerk can please read.
Item number seven for original consideration, a resolution authorizing $100,000 in CDBG-funded forgivable loan to the Land and Reutilization Corporation of the Capital District.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number eight, if the clerk can please read.
Item number eight for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot on Alvey Street.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number nine, if the clerk can please read.
Item number nine for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot on Pine Street.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number 10, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 10 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot at 868 Emmett Street.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number 11, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 11 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 234 11th Street.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number 12, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 12 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 232 Division Street.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number 13, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 13 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 450 Manhattan Street.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number 14, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 14 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1110 Chrysler Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number 15, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 15 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1129 Third Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number 16, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 16 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing settlement of a settlement by Louis Panisha.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number 17 will be taken out of order and presented by council member Carmel Patrick. If the clerk can please read.
Item number 17 for original consideration, a resolution honoring the 25th anniversary of Coco House.
Item number 18, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 18 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a revocable license agreement with 430 Franklin LLC for erection and maintenance of a ramp in the street right of way.
This will be a roll call item. Item number 19, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 19, under contract and supply, a resolution awarding bid and contract Broadway pavement preservation from Fourth Street to Weaver Street to Calanet Industries Incorporated.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number 20, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 20, under contract and supply, a resolution awarding the bid and contract for the Gerling and Lancaster drainage improvement of Carver Construction Incorporated.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. If there's nothing more to come before the City Council passes, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. I would like to call the City Council meeting to order from Monday, June 28, 2021, and I would like to call on Reverend Hunt for prayer invocation.
It is always a pleasure and an honor to be here with this Schenectady council members, other government officials, the public, and whatever press is following this service. Spirit of life, spirit of love, spirit of community, spirit of justice. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not just ask, how do we fix this, but also, what do we need to learn? How might we need to change and to whom do we need to listen? Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders but also representatives, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone, gay, straight, transgender, black, white, Hispanic, or Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh, or atheist, are all our neighbors, our sibling, and that throughout the ages prophets have been called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those that are hungry, those who have no home, those who are ill in body, mind, and spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who society has forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. This we ask in the name of all we hold dear, all that we hold good and right and true. May it be so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to call Ms. Patrick to lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one out of order resolution this evening, item number 17, a resolution honoring the 25th anniversary of Coco House. If I can call on Ms. Patrick to present.
Yes, thank you, President Mutaviran. May I have the floor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. And I know that Mr. Will Rivas is here to accept the resolution, so we'll turn it to him after I read the resolution. And it's really my honor to present this on behalf of my colleagues. Whereas Coco House, children of our community open to achievement, is celebrating 25 years of continuous operation, and whereas Rachel Anastasia Graham Summer, who grew up in Schenectady's Hamilton Hill neighborhood, loved her community and understood the struggles of youth in her hometown, founded Coco House while she was a sophomore at Union College, and whereas Coco House then and now provides mentoring for low-income children and youth in Hamilton Hill, charging no fees for its services, and whereas Coco House has served over 1,000 low-income children and youth in Hamilton Hill over the last 25 years, and whereas throughout its history, Coco House has been volunteer-based with many Union College students and others, providing mentoring as well as in-kind donations of supplies and other materials, and whereas Coco House's current executive director, William Rivas, who was raised in Hamilton Hill, is an alumnus of the Coco House mentoring programs and acknowledges that his participation in those programs saved his life, and whereas Coco House is renovating property immediately adjacent to its historic mentoring facility to expand program and double its capacity, and whereas this new state-of-the-art facility, which will be connected to the recently renovated original Coco House, will now have the physical footprint to continue serving the Hamilton Hill community for the next 25-plus years. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and city council do hereby pause in their deliberations to celebrate and honor the many contributions made to the Schenectady community by Rachel Anastasia Graham Summer, William Rivas, and all the volunteers who have served over the past 25 years to make Coco House successful and nurture the personal and academic growth of Schenectady's youth. Will, would you like to accept this?
May I have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Rivas, would you like to... Would you like to accept this, Mr. Rivas?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council President Mutaviran, and the rest of the city council. On behalf of Coco House, our board, and our youth that we serve, we want to thank you very much for this resolution this evening and for 25 years of partnership and service in the community. We are very thankful to have a city that believes in us and is willing to work with us the way you guys have. And we look forward to 25 years of expansion, growth, and continued support of our youth and our community in education and economic status. We thank you guys very much for this resolution, and, you know, we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you. We have one public hearing this evening. Reminder, we have extended the public comment for the public hearing portion to four minutes. I also respectfully ask that each person comment only on the subject relevant to the public hearing. Public hearing number one regarding the accepting ownership of Barrett Village Lane. Ms. Michael, are there any comments submitted for this public hearing? And if so, can you please read?
From Petey Boris. She stated that Barrett Street should belong to investors and their management partners. That is all.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this public hearing? Please click on the raised hand icon. Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Can I have approval for the minutes for June 14, 2021? Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Communication and petition. Ms. Michael, are there any?
Yes, communications presented to the city council from Monday, June 28, 2021. Under official, there were none. Under general, David Jackoloni and Emmanuel Millet, an email regarding further safety recommendations for stop signs that were erected in the Stockade neighborhood. From Petey Boris, an email explaining her current situation of needing to move and missing the last city council broadcast regarding city hall reopening. She there stated that Barrett Street should belong to investors and their management partners, and she was shocked to find out that being a resident of the city does not automatically give you membership to the municipal golf course. Under petitions, there were none. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee report from my colleagues. Okay. We'll move with privilege of the floor related to legislative agenda. Ms. Michael, do you have any submission with regards to this section?
No, Mr. Mutaviran, there were no submissions.
Is there anyone who would like to speak with regards to legislative agenda? Please click on the raised hand icon. Seeing none, I declare this portion closed. Can I have approval for the legislative consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have one resolution for roll call this evening. If the clerk can please read item number 18.
Item number 18 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a revocable license agreement with 430 Franklin LLC for erection and maintenance of a ramp in the city's right of way.
Motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Ms. Michael, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Porterfield?
Aye.
Ms. Lucy Wells, this is Epstein. Ms. Patrick?
Aye.
Mr. Palamini?
Yes.
Mr. Mutaviran?
Yes. The item is passed four to one. Privilege of the floor regarding general city business. Ms. Michael, do you have any submission with regards to this section?
No, Mr. Mutaviran, there were none.
Is there anyone who would like to speak with regards to city business? Please click on the raised hand icon. Seeing none, I declare this portion closed. I will move into miscellaneous business from my colleagues.
Mr. Mutaviran?
Please proceed.
So this is going to be a busy weekend. We have the Fourth of July coming up, and I would urge all of our city residents to be kind and try to avoid setting off fireworks. There are many people that this affects greatly, retired military, our pets, our children. I would hope everyone would have a respectful weekend, so I just ask all of our constituents throughout the city to please beware of that and be kind to your neighbors. Thank you.
Mr. Mutaviran?
Please proceed.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for supporting the resolution for cricket, and hopefully we can look forward to getting some dedicated cricket fields here in the city. As we can see, it's a growing sport, and so it's often spoke about Schenectady being the first of many things, so perhaps we can be the first in the capital region with a very, very nice dedicated cricket field. So hopefully we'll move forward with that and have the organizations that are currently using our route park to come together and we can move forward towards that goal. And I also would like to tell people to enjoy their Fourth of July, but really be safe. We hear about so many incidents about people getting hurt with fireworks, and let's just remember that fireworks in the city of Schenectady are illegal. So go to the planned fireworks, because we don't want any outcomes where people are getting hurt. So enjoy your weekend, be safe, and that's all I have. Thank you very much, Mr. Mutaviran.
Mr. Mutaviran?
Please proceed.
Thank you. At the next committee meeting, I'm going to be asking for a couple items to be put on the agenda. First of all, looking to add additional traffic enforcement. Been getting a number of complaints recently about people parking on islands, parking illegally, particularly after hours and on the weekends. It's been becoming increasingly problematic and is something that we should probably at least discuss whether or not, how we would want to address this. At the same time, I also believe it's important that we look at the signage throughout the city with regards to parking and streets so that we can have uniform signage so that there's not any issues. I know people don't want to get tickets, understandably so, but at the same time, you have a responsibility to park appropriately, and so I think signage is something that we need to try to address as well. Noise continues to be a problem. Been getting plenty of phone calls about that. Just ask people to play their music and whatever noise that they're making at an appropriate level. Play it so you can hear it, but the entire neighborhood doesn't. That would be quite nice. Understand people want to take advantage of the nice weather and get outside, but at the same time, so do your neighbors, and we ask people to be respectful of your neighbors because just because you like something doesn't mean the entire neighborhood wants to listen to it. And to chime in on the fireworks issue, we did send in that resolution to the Attorney General. That's a positive thing. Hopefully she will take that under advisement and move forward on that. And again, ask people not to shoot off their fireworks. As we get closer to the Fourth of July, it's becoming more prevalent that people are doing that, and all you need to do is go to the Facebook pages of the Police and Fire to learn more about that. I believe there's some information either on the city page or coming soon, so it's something that we've been trying to combat for a number of years, and we ask people to cooperate with that, and I believe that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mutaviran?
Please proceed.
I just wanted to remind everyone over these next several days of this intense heat, which looks to be breaking later in the week, that if you need a place to cool off, the library is a cooling station in Schenectady County, and if you go to the library's website at www.scp.org, it will give you the times of the various branches in the main library in terms of a spot to go and get some air conditioning if you don't have any at home. And just to be careful in terms of how much time you spend outside, how much time you have your pets outside, because, you know, you want to make sure that you're avoiding heat stroke and, you know, drinking a lot of water and trying to stay as cool as possible. Thank you.
Mayor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just follow up on Councilwoman Patrick's comments. Hot weather, make sure you stay appropriately hydrated. Don't overexert yourself. Take it easy and, you know, enjoy the summer weather. The governor's executive orders have expired, so that we will be going back to regular meetings on July 6, the reopening city hall. I still encourage people to call and make an appointment, take advantage of the information and the ability to do things online, and use still common sense for washing your hands, protecting yourself, because we're clearly ahead of the virus. It's still out there and can, you know, cause really deadly effects to people who contracted it. So we'll move back to some new normal and appreciate everyone's cooperation that we've had over the last roughly 15 months as we've dealt with really extraordinary circumstances. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that, I mean, I'll remind it to the public, this is our last virtual meeting. Our next meeting is Tuesday, July 6, and that will be held 5:30 PM in Room 110, City Hall, and we're moving back to in-person meeting. So at that time, and we'll be back for in-person meeting then, but I just want to remind the public that, you know, we got to take all precaution necessary, and if there's any CDC guidelines or we need to adhere to, we'll have to do that. So our next meeting is July 6, City Hall, Room 110, and that is our in-person meeting. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Mr. Mutaviran?
Whoops.
Yes.
There should be a thorough meeting held.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Mr. Colding, would you like to... My apologies.
It's okay. I apologize. I thought we were going to do it before, then I thought maybe once we started, we were going to do it after. I know I sent the materials out.
Yeah, please proceed. Sorry.
This is actually Mayor McCarthy's the chairperson, so I'd be... I'm going to pull it up. Give me one moment, Mr. Mutaviran. I know, is the mayor still on the call?
No, I think he dropped off. But if you can proceed, so go ahead with it.
You're the vice chairperson, Mr. Mutaviran. I don't know if you still want to proceed as vice chairperson. I did text Mayor McCarthy.
Ms. Michael, can you have him come back on? Ms. Michael, can you have him, uh, come back?
I will reach out to him.
Mr. Mudavaren, would you like to share your, I, I previously emailed out the, uh, the agenda with, um, the draft minutes and the various resolutions. As vice chairperson of, uh, Sura, uh, obviously without, um, the mayor being on the call, uh, you can, um, start the meeting, you can commence the meeting. In terms of, if you, do you want me to share my screen to show the agenda? I believe Mayor McCarthy is going to sign back in. I think we may have caught him in time. I appreciate it.
I, I have it. Um, I'm sharing it on my feed here, the agenda.
This was sent out to the, uh, all the Sura, um, members on Thursday. So if you're searching your email for it, um, that's where you can find it. Includes the, uh, agenda, the meeting minutes, and the four resolutions, which are the annual reports that, uh, we must submit to the state.
I apologize. I, uh, signed in a little bit late to the meeting and then signed out early for the, uh, end of the meeting. Uh, we ready to call this meeting to order?
Please proceed.
Called order, the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agency. First item on the agenda is the minutes, uh, acceptance of the minutes from our March eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is, uh, resolution to accept the investment report for twenty twenty. Entertain a motion to move?
So move.
Move by?
Second. Second.
Ms. Porterfield? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is adopted. Next item is the acceptance of our procurement report for twenty twenty. Entertain a motion. Move the item?
So move.
Mr. Mudavaren, do I have a second? Ms. Patrick? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is adopted. Next item is the acceptance of our measurement report for twenty twenty. Entertain a motion to move it?
So moved.
So move. Second?
Move by? Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is adopted. Next item is the acceptance of the annual report for twenty twenty. Entertain a motion to move that?
So move.
Second.
By Mr. Mudavaren. Second by Ms. Patrick. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is adopted. Is there any other business to come before the agency? Not I accept a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Move by Mr. Palamini, second by Mr. Mudavaren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agency stands adjourned. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good evening once again.
Yes. Good night.